Good evening. I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for Monday, July 28, 2025. Would you please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Jenny Snell?
Present.
Dan Larson?
Here.
Amanda Weaver?
Here.
Janice Hoppe?
Present.
Corey Stites?
Here.
Scott Ohm?
Here.
Leah Dozeman is running just a few minutes late. And Rachel Holtein?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors, are there any changes to be noted in the agenda? Seeing none, we will proceed with the agendas presented. We don't have any proclamations tonight, so I'd go directly to the public's right to speak. When the public may come and talk on any item that is not on the agenda. I have no one signed up to speak, and I will confirm that we have no one joining us online. And that's correct. So we are going to proceed now with Agenda Item Number One. This is our consent agenda. Counselor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be happy to. We have two items on our consent agenda. The first one, Item Number 1A, is a motion awarding a contract to Majestic Concrete Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $451,141, with a contingency amount of $45,114 for a total approved amount of $496,255 for the 2025 residential concrete program. Item Number 1B is a motion to cancel the August 4, 2025 study session.
May I have a motion on Agenda Items 1A and 1B?
You may. I move to award a contract to Majestic Concrete Contractors in the amount of $451,141 with a contingency amount of $45,114 for a total approved amount of $496,255 for the 2025 residential concrete program. And... A, I move to approve City Council Bill...
No.
Nope, that's not correct. Thank you. I move to cancel the August 4, 2025 study session.
We have a motion and a second on Agenda Item Number One. Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll now go to Agenda Item Number Two. Mayor Protem Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 13-2025, in ordinance amending Sections 11-561 and 11-569 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Law concerning the Hotel Licensing Program. At issue on April 7, 2025, staff provided the required 18th month update to council regarding the hotel licensing program that was established October 25, 2021. Council requested an amendment to the code so that the 18th month update is no longer required, but rather provided as deemed necessary by the council. Additionally, and subsequent to the April 7 discussion, staff realized that the dissolution of the Severe Weather Shelter Network, the Calls for Service, CFS, definition must be updated to more accurately reflect when CFS are excluded from the count so that hotels that provide shelter during severe weather can still benefit from the exclusion of these calls in their monthly calculations. The attached ordinance accomplishes both of these code amendments.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. Before I open the public hearing, I would like to welcome Counselor Dozeman to the council. And now I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Ally Scheck, our Deputy City Manager, will start.
Deputy City Manager Scheck, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly, really, the issue statement covered it, but do want to just acknowledge that we were given that specific direction to remove the 18-month. But that's, you know, we're like, we're coming back. We need to remove the specific name of the Severe Weather Shelter Network as that is no longer in action. But, so if there are no other questions on that piece, I'd like to turn it over to Chief, who has a little bit more of an update for you.
Okay. Chief Murtha?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Just a quick opportunity on my part to talk about some of the success of this program, and I promise it'll be very brief. You were updated in April of this year on some of the progress that's been made in our I-70 Kipling corridor, especially around the hotel motel licensing requirements. If I can have you sort of look back in the crystal ball to when I started in 2020, we talked very extensively about the resource drain that the hotels were on, the police department. 10% of all calls for service, all calls for service in aggregate were dedicated to the hotels at the time, eight hotels that we had in Wheat Ridge. I just want to update you once again regarding the results because I think it speaks to the success of the program very briefly. So between, we looked at several different starting points. 2019 was kind of pre-pandemic, before things got sideways, and 2022, when we started to see a real spike in crime across the country. And those were two different points in time that we compared ourselves to now. So between 2022 and 2024/2025, we recorded a drop in our calls for service rates at all hotels, just an aggregate number there, from an average of 1.68 calls for service per room per year in 2022 to 0.48 calls for service per room in 2024. What does that translate into? In 2019, looking back again at the 2019 number I told you, the total number of calls for service, now this was unfiltered calls for service, but this is where we started to consider how much resources were going to be dedicated to the hotels. We recorded, just at the hotel addresses, 2,344 calls for that year, 2019. That was again the year before I started. That number increased to just under 3,000 in 2021 COVID years. So we continue to spike at our hotels, and that's when 2022, if you recall, we instituted the hotel licensing program. Over the last calendar year, all calls for service at the hotels were down to 1,302. So again, 2019, 2,344, 2021, just under 3,000, 2,986, and now 1,302. I think you can see the dramatic decline there. That's a 44% reduction from 2019 and a 56% reduction calls for service from 2021. As we sort of cast our crystal ball forward a little bit, I wanted to bring attention to what's happening now that we consider the removal of the American Hotel from these numbers. Assuming no further reductions in calls for service at any of the remaining hotels, assuming those numbers stay stable, and reducing and eliminating calls for service with the American removed from that number, we can project that we will be down 73% to 74% in total calls for service at our I-70 Kipling hotels. That's, I think that's a remarkable achievement, and it's an all of city effort and an all of council effort, quite frankly. But as we look back at 913 calls for service in this calendar year, June to June, June 24 to June 25, that's a lot of calls for service for an agency our size. So eliminating that one hotel, that is not our preferred outcome, we prefer to work with them, but now that they have decided to sell, it is going to make an even greater impact on our ability to police the rest of the city. In 2024, we noted a 28.5% reduction in criminal complaints and criminal activity within a quarter mile of I-70 and Kipling since 2022. I've updated that because when we saw the American Hotel close half of their floors, I thought we might see more reduction than we have. We've seen an initial 7.5% reduction in our crime in the quarter mile around, that surrounds the hotels, just in the last four months alone. So I would venture to say that from our perspective, it's working. Certainly, the compassion that the city always injects into these projects was notable in the transition from people living there full-time to moving into better housing situations. And I thank the council and appreciate all the effort that everybody has put in because it's made our police department better and we're able to continue to reduce crime throughout the city. I've talked about our crime, overall crime rates throughout the last few years, seeing massive reduction in crime, what I would call large reduction in crime. This year, we're on track right now as another 8.5% reduction in crime, and predominantly in property crime where we struggled a little bit in thefts over the last few years. We're seeing good numbers there. So again, a lot of that is due to the reduction in crime at the hotels. So thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to questions from council, we would normally, we would throw this open to the public to talk. I have no one signed up to speak, so we'll go to questions from council. On this issue, are there any questions of staff? Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. And Chief, just so we're clear on this, when we talk about a call for service rate, and the ordinance says that they maintain a call for service rate of 1.5, is that a percentage, or what is 1.5?
1.5 represents the number of calls for service at a hotel divided by the amount of rooms. So it's obviously scalable depending on the size of the hotel. So in aggregate, if it's a 300, 300 calls for service for a hotel that has, you know, 100 rooms, you can do the math and figure out that that's, we're averaging three calls per room. And we do that on a monthly basis. So we, we said, council set that number, I think the first year was 1.8, and then we gave grace to the hotels to come to that 1.5 number. And that's been a pretty accurate and good number for us to target. The hotels have been, the ones that are paying attention have very easily met that number.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And just, if I might, for the record, there are seven items on here that, in order to secure a hotel license in the city of Wheat Ridge, a hotel must maintain that calls for service rate of 1.5. They must participate in the city's certified crime-free hotel motel program annually. They must make necessary corrective actions in response to the annual motel hotel inspection coordinated by the police and community development. They must comply with the city's landscape inspection program. They must comply with applicable building codes, and they must have a current and approved Wheat Ridge Police Department security plan on file. Chief, have you found that the hotels have been able to meet these fairly high standards as well?
Yeah, so several of our hotels were in compliance from day one. They already were operating under this. If you look at some of the trade organizations around hotel operations, you'll find these are straight out of those best practices, if you will, across the country. So it wasn't new to a lot of them to see this. The security plan is really tailored to each individual location and the challenges they might face. For example, the Motel 6, they have a lot of people in an open area that pass through there, and our request for them to fence that area so there wasn't so much transitory traffic through there, and they were unable to account for who was on their property has really brought them into compliance quickly. So I think all in all, it hasn't been very difficult for the ones that want to reinvest in this community. I say this all the time. I think we asked what the community values were, and we expressed those through this ordinance, and the folks who want to be part of this community met that with a smile, and the folks who didn't have either moved on or sold their properties. That's where we stand today.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions? I'm going to close the public hearing, and Mayor Protem, I have a motion on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 13-2025, in ordinance amending Sections 11-561 and 11-569 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Law concerning the Hotel Licensing Program on second reading, order it published, and it take effect 15 days after final publication as provided by Section 5.11 of the Charter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppe. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Holtein?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. It's always exciting to hear those statistics come back. I just want to make comment that when I first joined this council, this seemed like an unsolvable problem. I think for a long time, this was really something that staff and, you know, certain areas of our community really grappled with. And I just want to celebrate the partnership of good policy and working with staff on this has not only addressed the specific crime concerns, but it's also enabled us to be a more proactive partner in finding compassionate housing for people. So I just want to celebrate that, that, you know, really this felt unsolvable. And what we heard tonight is that things like this can be tackled, and it doesn't take forever. So I just want to thank everyone involved in that, and I think we do good jobs in a lot of places, but tonight, I'm really recognizing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
With Councilmember Ohm voting in favor, eight ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number Three. Counselor Larson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Council Bill 14, 2025, in ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 11571 and 11581 West 44th Avenue from Agricultural 1 to planned residential development with approval of an outline development plan. The applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Agricultural 1 to planned residential development with an outline development plan for a 39-unit cohousing community with a common house and shared amenities located at 11571 and 11581 West 44th Avenue.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. Counselor Larson, may I have a motion on this item?
Mayor, I believe it actually is quasi-judicial.
Well, it's noted in my, in my book is not. Is there a question on that?
As a rezoning, I think that's just an error on the ORIT cover sheet, but it doesn't change the motion.
Okay.
It looks like both boxes were checked. Apologize, this is a quasi-judicial.
Okay. Good catch. Counselor Larson?
Thank you.
Motion, please.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 14, 2025, in ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 11571 and 11581 West 44th Avenue from Agricultural 1 to planned residential development with an outline development plan on first reading for the sole purpose of ordering it published for a public hearing set for Monday, August 25, 2025, at 6:30 PM in city council chambers, and if adopted, that it take effect 15 days after publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppe. Would the clerk please poll the council?
With Councilmember Ohm voting in favor, eight ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Four. Counselor Holtein, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you. It'd be my pleasure. I'd like to introduce Resolution 36-2025, a resolution approving an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the Colorado Department of Transportation and the city of Wheat Ridge for the Wadsworth Path Project. Would you like me to read at issue, or is there a presentation?
We will have a presentation.
You will?
Yes.
Okay. Then I will skip the adissue.
Okay. So this will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation?
We do. To do that staff presentation, Kesselman is here, our interim Public Works Director. Kent?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you for having me. So in 2022, the Transportation Improvement Program awarded us a Dr. Cog grant for $7.5 million. In September of last year, we hired Olson Architects to design the pathway from 32nd to 35th. This kind of has three components. There was the 32nd to 35th sidewalk improvements, an intersection design that was to be completed by CDOT, and then after CDOT's design was completed, that integration of the construction was to be a part of this project. We found out early on last November, after we met with CDOT, that they were going to be, they're nowhere close to completing the design on 32nd Avenue. So this is to decouple the project and give back funding to Dr. Cog in the amount of $700,000 so that we can move forward with our project. They're still not done with the design. That would delay our project, which we're going to be ready to advertise before the October 1 deadline for Dr. Cog, so we will not, would not receive a strike. And then the total cost of the project, again, is the $7.5 million. So our current engineer's estimate, just for the 32nd to 35th Avenue improvements, which include the design, the elements of construction, the property acquisition, the construction management, and some contingency, is right around $7.5 million without the signal. Our estimate, based on recent projects and working with AECOM and the Wadsworth Project, we're estimating the signal cost of about $1.5 million. So if you're doing the quick math, we would be, we'd give back $700,000, be able to move forward with our project in October as scheduled, and if it did cost $1.5 million to complete the signal, we would be a net ahead of over $800,000. So that's kind of the project in a nutshell. The elements of the current project, once it's decoupled, will still include sidewalk, landscaping, updated pedestrian lighting. We're moving the bus shelter slightly, and it's going to have a new bus stop with a new shelter as well. And... Yeah, that's the, that's the crux of the project. So...
Okay.
Staff recommends approval of the amendment to the IGA between CDOT and the city of Wheat Ridge for the path project.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this, so we'll go to questions of council. Any questions of council from staff? Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what would the timeline look like for CDOT, and would this be a required project for them to complete, or is it just kind of at their whim?
It is required. Well, they're in design. They're still not done with that design. We've even checked with them within the last couple of months. But it is on their list to complete it and is a priority. So when they do get the design completed, they will move forward with the construction of the intersection. But we're, again, our fear was if we get a strike in October and then come next July, they're still not ready, we get strike two, and then our funding becomes jeopardized in October of next year.
Counselor Holtein?
Thank you. How, how involved are we with that redesign of the intersection? Is that something CDOT's doing on their own?
Completely on their own.
And what type of criteria and, and, yeah, what are the design guidance that they're using for it, do you know?
When we met with them, we asked them, you know, because at 32nd, that intersection, you know, it's really, really in line for the turn lanes, and we asked them if they were even going to consider offsetting that. So people in the turn lanes could, you know, not be hooking their head around to see, and they said, no, this is strictly a remove and replace upgrade. So they are pretty much doing the upgrades of the signals as they are in place. They may move slightly, but there's no increase in, in right-of-way, there's no increase in the road section, there's no improvements to change the configuration of the intersection. They'll be required to do the ADA or curb ramp improvements around there. We did take the south, north, I'm terrible at directions, I'm sorry. We took the intercept, the corner of, I think it's the southwest where the gas station is, northwest, northwest intersection, and we added that to our project. So that, those improvements will be a part of the 32nd to 35th project on its own with improved ADA ramps and sidewalks on that, on that area.
Okay. I'm asking just because, you know, that the 32nd Avenue is just a heavily used east-west bikeway, and I believe the 32nd and Wadsworth intersection is in CDOT's bike ped safety assessment as one of the top intersections of concern. And so I guess there's a, there's, in addition to decoupling both the throughways for both of these projects, I'm a little concerned that the, that intersection reinvestment is not going to address some of the safety concerns of traveling through it on a bike. It's, it is not, it's pretty not safe. There's a lot of co-mixing, there's no green paint indicating like priority passage for the bicyclists who technically have lanes, although I hesitate to call the bike lanes west of Wadsworth lanes, they're a little bit too narrow. So I'm just signaling here that as this project moves forward, we may want to revisit some of the paint aspects of that to address, to make sure that it's actually a safe intersection. So, and then my second question is, I'm very glad we're doing this decoupling because I'm excited to hear that we're going to make the October deadline for going out on this. What do you expect the timeline to be for initiating the work? I know there's some property acquisition. It's, it's not just putting down a sidewalk, but I'd love to hear a timeline if you have it.
Yeah, I think we'll be under construction in the beginning of 2026.
Yay. I would love to ride my bike here along that. Okay, great. I appreciate the additional information.
Our plan would be to complete this project in 2026 under, once we get under contract.
That would be great.
And we can certainly check, we'll check with CDOT and see what their progress is on the plans, and if they have any kind of 30%, we'll, we'll see if we can get a copy of those, and we can certainly pass those along and see what kind of improvements. Because again, in the original scope, they were to do those things that you mentioned, improvement of the bike ways and striping and stuff. And so I know that they had talked, we had asked at the beginning to talk about, you know, a protective permissive and upgrading those signal heads at that intersection as part of the project. So I know that they were... know that they were adding that in. But again, we're, it's, it's their design, but we will push as much as we can.
I think at the very least, there's a precedence at Thirty-fifth and, and Sheridan. They're starting to put in some pedestrian lead signaling on some of their arterial crossways that are allowing like a small lead time for pedestrians and bikes to enter the intersection at an all-stop. So, you know, either that, or, and they're also doing a lot of bike detection so that bikes don't have to actually go over, they like actually hit the activation. So those are just two small things that with the signal, signal, signalizing alone could be really beneficiary that wouldn't require paint. So if those, if those can be passed along as, uh, strong requests, it would be really good to get those in that intersection.
We will certainly do that, and we'll take that into account and do any of our other projects.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I just wanted to kind of reinforce what Counselor Holtein was saying. That is a really tough intersection on a bike. But I have heard from more than two residents that live near that area, just the, the overall stress of that intersection, whether you're in a car, walking, whatever. So any sort of, I'll just add my name to the, or my voice to that support of, of any sort of redesign, just because it is challenging for, for everyone. So I appreciate all the work, and I'm glad we're going to take that on. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't see any further questions. So Counselor Holtein, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes. I move to approve Resolution thirty-six dash twenty-twenty-five, a resolution approving an amendment to the intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement between the Colorado Department of Transportation and the City of Wheat Ridge for the Wadsworth Path Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll, please poll the council.
With Councilmember Ohm voting in favor, all ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Five. Counselor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion to approve a contract to purchase property located at forty-five ninety-three Parpet Street for the expansion and consolidation of the Public Works and Parks Operations Facilities. Would you like me to read the issue, or are you presenting?
We do have a presentation. You can, um, yes. So it's up to you. We can, you wait for the presentation? Okay.
Okay. So this is going to be a motion of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, I understand we have a presentation on this item.
We do. We do. Glad you caught that. Yeah, very brief, but we do have some, some guests here this evening as well. They would like to speak. But as you remember, we've discussed this a couple of times in, in previous meetings. As a recommendation coming from our facilities master plan, primary recommendation was to look for property to potentially consolidate and expand the Public Works and Parks Operations Facilities, and we were lucky to, to find a parcel. We are here this evening with contract approval for one point million to purchase a property that's adjacent to the current Public Works Operations Facilities. The seller of the property is here this evening, and our broker, Esther Kettering, who you met a couple of weeks ago, is here this evening as well, and I'd like her to address the contract and the contingencies that are in that and the timeline that moving forward. Thanks, Esther.
Hi there. My name is Esther Kettering, and I'm with Pinnacle Real Estate Advisors. My colleague, Joe Alston, is here. And for those of you who were at study session a month ago, I think it was, we were initially looking at a different property. This is not that one. This is a new property, forty-five ninety-three Parpet Street. It is still contiguous to the existing Public Works site, and, uh, while the seller on the other property had signed a letter of intent, they had difficulty coming to terms on the contract for a variety of reasons that were not in our control internal to the sellers. And an opportunity presented itself to take a look at forty-five ninety-three Parpet. And I have a parcel map here that's pretty simple. Is there a way to, well, I can just pass it. So, pass that. The existing public works site is shown in green. The initial parcel that the city had interest in is yellow and fronts on Forty-fourth, and the parcel we're discussing tonight is at forty-five ninety-three Parpet, and it is shown, I think, in orange. So, um, this property is currently under contract with city managers signing a contract that is strictly contingent upon city council's approval at tonight's meeting for a million one. And the advantages of this site over the initial site, number one, it's about half price. Number two, it is a flat site. It is vacant. Its measurements are roughly two-hundred-and-fifty feet frontage on Parpet and it's four-hundred-and-ninety feet deep. The two-hundred-and-fifty-foot rear lot line, west lot line, adjoins Public Service, or, I'm, Public Works property. There are very few improvements on the site. If you recall, the last site that we were considering was pretty burdened with improvements. There was a ten-thousand-square-foot commercial building, a handful of residential structures. This property has a, uh, small home that is already on its way to demolition, just by natural state of things, on a workshop, a shed, and a loping shed for animals. So it's largely vacant. There is an XL power line crossing the property, and we can talk about that for a minute or two. The seller provided very comprehensive due diligence documents, almost overkill for the city's purposes because the seller's initial plan was to develop this property for townhomes or duplexes. And so they had done a lot of engineering and design work that really isn't, uh, required by the city or relevant to the city's use. However, they conducted an asbestos inspection of the improvements, which would need to be done anyway, and there, the surveying is comprehensive. I did check the survey. The survey was done by Farnsworth, who also did the existing survey on the existing Public Works lot, and there is an exact match between the west property line of the subject parcel and the east property line of the Public Works site. The survey does have a couple of minor issues, but there are nothing that would affect the city's, um, purchase or ownership of this property. In other words, you might be thinking, what could that possibly be? Well, there's a no-man's-land of about five foot, point-six feet, five-point-six feet strip of land along the north property line of the subject parcel that isn't owned by anybody according to the county. So that's something that you might want to take a look at resolving in the long-term future, but it's not going to affect the ownership or acquisition of this property. So, back to XL Energy, initially, Public Works did express some concerns about the public service easement. And the easement was established in nineteen-twenty-three. It crosses several parcels. We made a site visit on Friday, and the interesting thing to me was that the XL Energy has a single pole structure on Forty-fourth and Parpet, and then the line progresses north. And the structure, the support for the power lines on the subject property is one of the big metal, you know, four-corner posts structures with arms that stick out like this. I think that there's an opportunity to have the city request at some point in the future to have XL update that structure to a single pole structure. There is a fifty-foot wide easement for this XL line, and then at the base of that, um, structure, it's a fifty-foot radius from the center of the structure, so you really have a hundred-foot circle. There's a lot you can do under that easement area. So XL doesn't want to see buildings. You can do landscaping. You can probably park vehicles. You cannot store vehicles. There's a difference. They just need to have the ability to get under that line and at the pole to make repairs and so forth. But that, that is something that can be further defined and worked with. So the date of the contract, or the date it was signed, was July eighteenth. The city has a sixty-day inspection period. That is carte blanche. If they find, if the city finds anything unacceptable about this property, the city can terminate the, the contract. The contingency in the contract is that the city council must approve the contract and the closing, and then the inspection period is up or expired on September second, and the proposed closing date is October tenth. And the way the closing date is written is the part, if the parties mutually agree on an earlier closing date, that can occur. It can't be later, but it can be earlier if all conditions are met. So not only is the city saving or avoiding the cost of a million dollars, uh, plus or minus, I believe that the demolition on the other property would have been in excess of a hundred thousand dollars easily, plus surveying, plus environmental, which we thought would go to a phase two, which would involve soils tests and possible remediation, then possibly the arduous renegotiation of the contract price if we found, um, toward environmental conditions. So this all-in-all is hard to say it's a better deal, but it, it's hard not to say it's a better deal. So, questions?
Before we go to questions from council, I'll just say that we don't have anyone from the public signed up to speak on this. So now we'll go to questions from council. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. A larger piece of property for less money with less things on it to remove. Sounds like a pretty big no-brainer. I know that Urban Renewal Authority was going to loan us the monies for, initially, we had said yes to the more expensive one. So we have more than the one-point-two. This property doesn't have anything on it. Are we sure we don't want to ask Urban Renewal Authority for more money?
Yeah, I talked to Steve Arden and Corey Hoffman, our attorney, this afternoon about that. I think what's going to be proposed is stick with the one-point-two loan, because Corey says, the attorney says that you need, you need a specific loan amount and an, for an amortization schedule. And honestly, I don't want to burden the city's budget with extra money that we don't necessarily need to spend right now. We will need to make some improvements. But Steve said he's going to ask the Urban Renewal Authority that they'd be open to more loan amount down the road when needed. So that's, that's how I prefer to do it. We're asking for one-point-two, a hundred thousand more than the purchase price, but that will help cover, um, closing and other costs.
Great. Thank you.
Any additional questions on this? Counselor Larson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I do have a, a few questions here. When I looked up the property on the, the county's, the county assessor's site, I did see that it was last sold in October twenty-one, and the sale price then was six-hundred thousand. And we're four years later, and we're paying over a million.
The current owner, the seller, has put significant monies into engineering and planning to build seven duplexes and create a detention storm drainage pond. And so the seller was well down the road with development efforts, and there, there is a note on the property. I'm not sure what the book value or the, the sunk cost that the seller has in the property in addition to the purchase price, but seller is here. You can ask him. I, I think the price is fair. It could be developed for townhomes. It is a challenging development in some respects. In this entire West Forty-fourth Avenue corridor, the water table is fairly high. It may not have allowed basements. Public Works is not going to have that issue. I think the buildings that are, the conversations I've had with Dan Byer of Public Works indicate that it would, improvements would be slab-on-grade or either gravel or asphalt paving for vehicles and equipment. So it's not, not a bad deal. So the other, the other thing is the other site that we were looking at had renters on it, so the value on that site had an investment value that was created by income from the, from the renters. So this is two-point-eight acres. That other site was two-point-two acres. It's kind of hard to argue, from my perspective.
And, and I, well, I would never argue price with a real estate person.
Feel free.
The, the question, the significant question I have, though, is on that power line coming through there and the easement and what we, what the city, it will not be allowed to do. You say that, that we're not going to, the city will not be able to build permanent structures under or along that easement.
Right. But you can park vehicles. I've had some experience with this on other projects. You can park vehicles. You can have a detention pond, as long as it's not a real pond. It's just a low spot. You can landscape it. You can pave it, but you cannot put a building. And then the difference between parking and storage, if you're going to store vehicles there that have four flat tires and they're waiting for engine rebuilds, that's not a good thing for XL. They don't want to see storage of pipe or Jersey barricades or whatever. So it just, there's plenty of site there. I have a survey here. If you want to take a look at the easement.
If you just describe it, the easement runs pretty much on an angle right through the middle of the property, right?
Pretty much, yeah. And, uh, they, you know, I, I've read the easement. It's old, and it doesn't say anything about this, um, fifty-foot radius area at the base of the structure, which is something I think we need to dis, uh, discover during the inspection period. There needs to be communication directly between the city and XL to understand this because I imagine that they pass some rule or something. There are no subsequent recorded documents to that nineteen-twenty-three easement dedication. And the easement dedication is pretty clear that it's fifty feet wide, twenty-five feet on center. So how did this round, uh, radius at the base of the power structure itself come into being? Quite often, what we see in power line easements or ga, even gas line, underground gas line, is they will have an, a permanent easement, and then they have a temporary easement that's even wider for the initial construction, and then sometimes they can reactivate that wider easement if they need to dig it up or, you know, repair it.
And how amenable would, do you think, in your opinion, the, the folks at XL be to replacing that big metal tower with a single pole?
That's a really good question. I think that if they had power users further north, uh, north of I-70 who demanded better service, whether it's municipal residential services or an industrial service, that they could possibly justify an improvement, a replacement of that structure. It looks pretty old to me.
Well, we might talk to the folks at the car dealership because that's where the next pole heading north is. I, the, the other, I have one or two more here real quick. The, for the city, the, the property is now zoned Agriculture A-one. What has to happen to be able to develop?
I, I think, wasn't the zoning re, wasn't granted? I thought it was rezoned to T-U.
To mixed use. Um, let's see. I can't remember if it's in the memo. I'm sorry, Ms. Larson. I can't remember the exact zoning and what would be required for municipal uses. Mr. Dole, do you have off the top of your head? But But that's something we've, would be, have to be a next step, yeah, to make sure it's appropriate for municipal uses. And I'm Kevin.
When I, when I looked this afternoon, it was still showing, it's A1.
He probably, he said, the owner says yes, still agriculture one.
Okay.
And then the last question I have is regard the interest we had in the other property, the one fronting on 44th. And I would imagine during our, during the city's inspection and sort of the due diligence required to, to work on a deal like that, condition of that property became apparent. And I understand that there are, there are some issues with, or varmints, we'll call them, it's small animals that tend to run around and, and maybe they have homes there. And now that we know that they exist, is, is there anything the city can do to ask or request somehow that the owner of the property do something to clean it up?
Yeah, there, we, you know, have code enforcement and regulations on that. And we've, we've had some interactions with that property owner over the last couple of years because of those issues. And I, I'm sorry, I kind of missed it. You said there's rodents on the property?
That's what I'm hearing, yes.
Yeah, because that's, I haven't heard that, but we can, we can check into that. But it is, it's in definitely disrepair, a lot of the property, and it wouldn't surprise me if there are rodents. But we hear about rats all over Wheat Ridge. People call it Rat Ridge. Don't, don't say that. But yeah, we can look into that further, have code enforcement look into the property, see if there's any issues with that.
And, and I appreciate that. And I, I do tend to agree that this is a, a much better prospect for, for the development going forward. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Seeing none, Councilor Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve a contract to purchase property located at 4593 Parpet Street for the expansion and consolidation of the Public Works and Parks Operations facilities and authorize and direct the city manager to execute the contract for purchase and further authorize the city manager, mayor, and city clerk as necessary to execute such additional instruments as necessary to facilitate the purchase.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Dozeman.
Sorry, I just have a quick note. Growing up, this used to be a farm, and there was an annual pumpkin patch that my family and I went to, and it was like a pick your own pumpkin. So it was really sad to see, you know, an agricultural property be sold, but it was in disrepair even when I was a young child. So, and I definitely think that this is a better deal for the city in regards to the size of the property, the price, and then kind of any mediation or remediation that we would need to do. So just appreciate staff kind of keeping an eye out and doing what's best for the city in terms of carrying out our facilities master plan, but just being really cognizant of finances as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
With Councilmember Ohm voting in favor, all ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Six. Councilor Snell, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a motion to approve appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. I'll read the issue. In June of 2025, the resignation of one planning commission member was received. In addition, during the review period, it was realized that a planning commission member currently serving in a District Four seat resides in District One. Staff proposes moving the District Four member into the correct District One vacancy and appointing a new member into the District Four seat.
Thank you. There are no members of the public signed up to speak on this item. Councilor Hoppy, would you please make a motion for the District One appointment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Michael Moore to the District One Planning Commission vacant seat, aligning him with the vacancy in which district he resides, term ending March 2nd, 2028.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Snell. Would the clerk please poll the council?
With Councilmember Ohm voting in favor, all ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman, would you please make the motion to appoint the District Four representative?
I move to appoint Anna Sparks to the District Four Planning Commission vacancy seat, term to expire March 2nd, 2026.
Second. Thank you. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Councilmember Ohm voting in favor, all ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes our action items. We will now go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff.
Nothing else to see me, thank you.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters, Mr. Dol.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll start with elected officials' matters. We'll start online with the Councilor Ohm.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, then we will go to Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, I just wanted to share, I got an opportunity to go over last week to see the progress on the green, and it looks fantastic. And I'm really excited for the, bless you. I'm waiting for the, I'm excited for the, for the, for the opening, which is coming up soon, but it is such a great space. And I think could already see so many things happening there, and it's just going to be great for our, our community. I do encourage you to go by there. All the photos are up. They're lit up at night. It looks beautiful. So it's, it's really going to be a, a great space, and I felt really lucky to be able to see it again. So that's all I've got for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Holtein.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And really, all I have tonight is, last night I was out walking the dog and I heard crickets for the first time, so we're at that point in the summer.
All right. Good to have, good to know. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder that the Carnation Festival is coming up, August 8th, 9th, and 10th. We're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Right around the corner. Okay. Council Weaver.
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Let's see, Councilor Hoppy.
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Stites.
Two things tonight, I'll be real quick. Saturday, I had the opportunity to join a, a big group of Wheat Ridge residents supporting the Terry Neve Foundation for Breast Cancer Awareness and Research. It was a big bongo party at the, the Wheat Ridge Grange, so thank you to them for supporting it. And then Thursday, I had to miss the, the tour of the, the green, but I was down at Fiddler's Green, seeing the AJR concert with a bunch of Wheat Ridge High School people because the Wheat Ridge High School band got to perform with AJR, which was super cool to watch them get up there in front of 18,000 people and absolutely rock it. So if you have a choice, you should send your kids to Wheat Ridge High School because it's a maiden school. And if you can find it, you should find it by Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Well, that's what school choice is all about, isn't it? Okay. I don't have anything tonight. We will, our meeting is canceled for next week, but we will be here in a full, a full council meeting on the following Monday. So I hope everyone will travel slowly and safely through our town, and thank you all for being here tonight. And if there is no more business to come before us, we will stand adjourned.